We tried to wait, so we're gonna get started. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in a notice of January 5th, 2017. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices. Mail sent to the town hall clerk, advertising the Nutley Sun and Star ledger on January 12th, 2017, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. We all rise for your place.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll up.
Mr. Valsado?
Here.
Mrs. Danjett Martin?
Here.
Mr. Pera?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mrs. Talarra?
Ms. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Caricella?
Here.
Okay, we need approval of the minutes.
Someone?
Second. Well, favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Yes. I have a letter from Mayor Scarpelli addressed to the Nutley Board of Education. The 98 Memorial Day Parade will be held on Monday, May 29th, 2017, and your organization is cordially invited to participate in this remarkable event. We ask that all participants arrive at the Park Ola at 10:30 a.m. and the parade kickoff will begin at 11:00. The mayor's office along with the Nutley Veterans Council will be working to keep the flow of open ceremonies at the parade will be smooth. Marching units, in quotes, are encouraged to participate in this event. The deadline for participation is Friday, May 6th. If you could just email Mrs. Kakuza and let her know if you will be marching, we can send in the response from the campaign.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to our presentations for this evening. The first presentation is our biannual HIB report, which will be done by Mr. Capella, and then that'll be followed by our community survey and website demo for the survey that we sent out recently, and that will be done by our Director of Communications, Ms. Karen Greco.
Good evening, everyone. So good to see that everyone came out to do our presentation. The last intimidation bullying from September 2016 to December 16, 2016. Part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is twice a year. I do have to report, I have to provide information to the Board of Education public regarding information pertaining to the previous reporting period. Quickly, when we're talking about HIB, the definition, it has to be motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic, has to take place on school property, school function, school bus, or off school grounds. If it is off school grounds, there must be a nexus between the school and the incident. It has to be impact on the student as well. There has to be an effect. Here are the protected characteristics under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Character characteristics as in other distinguishing characteristics. Here are some examples of how could someone else be targeted. From September to December, the only change that we've had this year is that Mr. Neglia is full-time at Washington and Mrs. Pennell now is sharing town meeting week in school in Spring Garden. They're the anti-bullying specialists, they're the lead investigators, as well as they lead their school safety team initiative. From September to December, we had 20 cases that were investigated, and here is the breakdown to your right, the total number of cases that were investigated by each school. At the elementary level, there were four cases were investigated at Lincoln, zero were considered confirmed HIB, one investigation at Radcliffe, and that was considered confirmed HIB, two investigated at Spring Garden, zero were HIBs. Washington had no investigations, Yanacola had one investigation, and one was confirmed HIB. Here is the breakdown of the two cases where what were the protected characteristics? As you can see, there are four characteristics that are listed. In each case, there was two protected characteristics that were targeted. Secondary level, we have four investigations at the high school, one was considered a HIB, and four out of the eight investigations at John Walker were considered a confirmed HIB. And here are the cases where the, and I apologize, confirmed HIB, there was four, that's my fault. It says five up there, it's actually four, and here were the protected characteristics. Things that we did district-wide. As new staff members come in throughout the course of the year, they're constantly coming in at different positions. The law states that anyone that had any significant contact with students needs to be trained. So throughout from that period of time, I conducted 13 trainings, just to make sure that every staff member is up to date and they're familiar with the law. On November, I conducted a parent training, met with the principals. In September, throughout the district, staff members, anti-bullying specialists are training students, meeting with students, meeting with anti-bullying specialists. I'm also part of an online anti-bullying coordinator association, where different coordinators throughout the state of New Jersey are always asking questions, and we're communicating through an online, I guess you could call it a chat room. Confusingly providing PA announcements throughout the district, social media, website posts, acknowledging positive accomplishments. The school counseling department is also distributing their newsletter. Anyone's parents, staff, anyone in the community that had any information regarding a HIB law and information regarding our district, there's a link on our district website. As of the end of December, our affirmative action committee conducted five trainings that's being done throughout the school district. At individual level, every case is separate and distinct. Here is just a snapshot of some of the things that we do when we're meeting with students individually, going to discipline, support services, any type of assignments that we're dealing with the case that we feel that a student would benefit from. For us, it's not just discipline, it's about educating the students to work with them to, so hopefully they learn from this experience. Also in the classroom, Dr. Ed Prog at the elementary level, we have the LEAD program through the Nutley Police Department. We do have advisories at John Walker Middle School, and throughout the district, there's always classrooms lessons that are infused into the curriculum. We also have a CHAMP, the mentoring program, shovel out seniors. Once again, it's not just about HIB prevention, it's about building character. What can we do for a community to help those in their community, build those character, sense of community. Miss Reliance funds a lot of our programs, you know, the athletics, working with Mr. Pera. One of the requirements of each team is to do community service outreach. And I did present this in our November meeting, but for the week of respect, the first full week of October, district-wide at elementary, middle school, and high school, conducted different activities. Also in December, we posted the anti-bullying bill of rights grades for our districts from the last school year. Those grades are available online on the district in the HIB menu. That's about it. Thank you.
You do a wonderful job gathering the data and recording it back to us three times a year, so thank you for being here.
It feels like I'm here all the time.
Next up, we have our Director of Communications, Karen Greco. She's gonna be going over the survey results that the community participated in at the end of our town halls.
Hi, everybody. Thanks to the board for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Karen Greco, the Director of Communications, and I'm here tonight to present on the data that we gathered from our recent community survey. As you're aware, during January, February, and early March, we held six town hall meetings at all elementary schools and the middle school. We held smaller informal conversations with various community groups and concept review sessions at the public library to discuss potential construction. At each of these, the district leaders presented the details of overcrowding and the need for facility updates at four of our schools, Washington Yanacola, John Walker Middle School, and Nutley High School. And we hope that while we presented our challenges to you, the community would present your feedback to us. The administration and the board listened over the last 10 weeks, and earlier this month, we generated a brief survey to gather information before we moved forward. Some of the basics of the survey, we used Survey Monkey to design a nine-question survey. There were eight multiple choice questions and one open-ended. It launched on March 2nd and closed on March 10th. I was thrilled with the response. We had more than 1,600 responses, 1,667 to be exact, and 657 responses to the open-ended questions. The survey was sent to all districts' families via school messenger. It was posted to our website and social media pages. It was sent to all staff via email and sent to the community through the township's alert system. I also just highlighted up there the three biggest days of responses, day one, day two, and day eight. We first gathered information about the age of the people that responded. You can see in the yellow, the largest age group was 31 to 35. We have 46 to 65 in the gray, and we had over 65 coming in, about 12 percent, and we have the two smallest groups, 18 and under, and 19 to 30, coming in at just 6 percent total. Question two focused on a bit of, some more demographic information, whether you are a parent of a Nutley student, an employee of the district, a business owner in town, a resident, a student in the Nutley public schools, or in some cases, none of the above. You'll see that residents made up the largest group at 64 percent, that's the gray bar. Parents at 55 percent, coming in at more than half, that's the greenish bar at the top. 14 percent were employees of the district, and then there was a very small percent that were business owners and students. We then asked a bit of information about the children in each household or lack of children in each household. Elementary students came in at the highest with 41 percent of households having an elementary student. What was interesting to me was that the next highest group had no children in the district or children who had already attended our district schools, that was 37 percent. Household with high school-age students came in at 19 percent. Non-school-age children, that's the top box. Infant to five years old came in at 14 percent, and middle school students at close to 13 Question four, we polled the group to see how they get information regarding the Nutley public schools, and I personally think this is a very helpful slide as we move forward. According to the survey, our district website is the most utilized vehicle for information, that is the top bar up there. 70 percent of our respondents checked that off. I personally am thrilled with that response because I do feel like the district website has accurate and current information and is a great source for people to gather their information. Town hall email announcements are high as well, that is the gray box there, that came in at 63 percent, and local newspapers or local online news sites was close to 50 percent, that's the dark yellow. I want to draw attention here to 57 percent of the people who said they get their information from their friends or word of mouth. And while I think it's very common in a closely knit community like Nutley for people to gather information from friends, and I know that I get a lot of information by word of mouth from where I live as well, I do want to caution people that sometimes information and facts change as you hear it from different people, so while I think it's great that people are talking to each other, I do just want to encourage everyone to use the district website as a good source of current and accurate information. Teachers in the district came in at 27 percent, that's the navy blue here. District's social media platforms came in at 25 percent, and all four of the in-person meetings that we listed on this, PTO meetings, Board of Education meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings, and Town Hall meetings, seem to resonate with a small percentage of people. Board of Commissioners came in at about 3 percent, Board of Education at 13 percent, Town Hall meetings down here at 11 percent, and PTO meetings at 19 percent. I think that you've heard us all discuss over the last several months some of the challenges that the district faces because of the overcrowding at our various schools, and we asked the respondents to tell us which they too consider to be a challenge of concern. An overwhelming number of respondents polled, almost 80 percent, said that they found a challenge of the overcrowding to be increased class sizes, a potential decline in academic rigor, that's here at the bottom, that came in at 64 percent, or 1,010 respondents who selected that box. And in this case, you were allowed to check more than one, so some people, you know, could check two, three, four, or five, depending on their thought process. Additional trailers being added throughout the district came in at 50 percent, that's the, I'm sorry, that's the light blue box here. New registrants being restricted from attending their neighborhood school came in at 37 percent. I think we all heard Dr. Glazer say more than once that she's denied people the ability to go to their local school and sent them to a school that perhaps has more room in a certain section like Spring Garden. That came in at 37 percent. And a potential redistricting was the lowest perceived challenge, that came in at 31 percent, and that's the yellow box right there. Question six, we asked people which do you believe has been a contributing factor to the district's overcrowding? Here we see the gray box here. 1,352 respondents attribute the overcrowding to the multifamily developments in town. That's more than any other factor, and we listed five. 85 percent of respondents chose that. The turnover of single-family homes in town came in second, navy blue at the bottom, that was 32 percent. The shrinking schoolhouse, which I'm sure you've heard our board and administration mention, that's the state mandates that have made our existing spaces smaller due to program requirements, 28 percent of people chose that. Increased special education population and the needs for this program was 26 percent, and space needed to provide for kindergarten came in at 17 percent. We then asked here how long you've lived in Nutley. Almost 45 percent have lived in town for more than 20 years. I do think it's worth noting that 7 percent of the folks who took this survey do not live in town at all. We then asked, as we try to prepare to move forward, if you would like to participate in a community action group regarding these construction projects. You'll see here, 1,605 people answered this question and close to 80 percent do not want to be contacted. We did gather 333 email addresses of people who do wish to participate, so we've, I have all of those with me, and as we move forward in the next couple of weeks and the next couple of months, we will reach out to people to engage them. We then asked one open-ended question. We asked what additional thoughts, concerns, or ideas do you have regarding the Nutley Public School District? We asked folks to be as direct as possible, and we had 657 people respond to this open-ended question. This here is a Wordle, I'm sure some of you have seen this before. I took all the texts from 657 responses, I put it into a program called Wordle, which analyzes the most commonly used phrases and words in the text and presented them as most frequently used. I think it's a great way to showcase some of the common themes that came out. You'll see students, children in town came out on top. You'll see taxes is predominant, as are education, teachers, overcrowding, kids. I just thought it was kind of a nice visual way to see what some folks were saying. I did, in the next couple of slides, I pulled out 14 different responses, kind of overouching themes of the open-ended questions. I did choose some that I found to be very positive and some that I found to be very critical. I want to point out that a lot of, a lot of these responses did have common themes, but there were a large number of the 600-plus responses that were kind of one-offs, more individualized to what the specific person had encountered over the course of their experience here with the schools. I'll just give you a second to read some of these. This presentation will be posted tomorrow morning on the website. It will be posted on the tab on the left, which I'm gonna go over in a minute, which will be likely called the referendum tab. You could look at this presentation in more detail and read through these more thoroughly. I do think that there's some good information in these, and I don't know if you want to take questions now or if you want to save this for the end, but I'm happy to answer anything you may have.
We're gonna hold off on questions until the end, but if anybody wants to refer back to this slide when we get into the latter part of our meeting, you're more than welcome to make any comment on anything that was relevant in the slides.
Okay. I'm just gonna switch my location and go over the website. couple of weeks, we started this Town Hall Meetings tab back in January when we began our Town Hall meetings. This is a great place, I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to it and make sure you had the opportunity to look at it. A lot of good information on this, whether you've been on board with the process in the last 10 weeks or whether you're just joining us now. We have a frequently asked questions document, it's eight pages of information and questions that we've heard over the last couple of months that we've kind of gathered together here, so chances are, if you have a question, someone else has probably had it before you, and this is a good place to come to get information, updating it as questions come in, so it's very current. We have the demographer's report that was presented, I believe in, yeah, it was November 2016, and we have three variations of our presentation. The Town Hall presentation that Dr. Glazer, Diane Caricella, our architect, and Karen Yemmits presented five times at each of the elementary schools. We have the presentation that was presented at the zoning board in February, and the final Town Hall presentation, which had some changes to our original concepts and our original financial figures, that was presented on March 18th. We have concept drawings. We've been talking repeatedly about the inability to place the drawings on the website due to security measures, so we did ask the architects to pull out some of the spaces separate and apart from the building, just so you can see some of the development of the individual schools and the work that's going to be done there. There are four separate floor plans for each of the schools, and then we've given you a myriad of, to watch our video. We've got all six options here, you can choose, you can choose one or choose them all, and you can enjoy them at your leisure. So as we move forward, the name of that tab will likely change. We have, for the last couple of weeks, we have not had an email address able to do email questions into us. We kind of cut that off after the last Town Hall meeting. That was called Ideas and Feedback@huryschools.org. We will be launching a new email address likely tomorrow morning, where you can continue to provide, where you can ask questions or provide information. If you neglected to fill out the survey and want to be part of a committee, you can email that in. So once we have that email address set up, we will move forward like that, and I'll make sure that that's on the district website, so everyone has the opportunity to continue to be involved. Thank you.
It was a lot of work, I know, to collate all of those survey results. We appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
We're gonna have our superintendent report.
Good evening, and welcome, everyone. I'm so glad that so many of you could join us this evening. Been another busy couple of weeks. So first, I'd like to start off and acknowledge the winner of our American Legion Post 70 coloring contest. Caitlin Chu from Washington School, Caitlin Shatino from Lincoln School, and Caitlin, actually, was Lincoln's winner last year, too. Kate Burani from Spring Garden, Lucas Gomri from Radcliffe, and Mary Albanese from Yanacola School were all of our winners. This contest is actually held annually as part of the Post Americanism Program. Each winner got a $25 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card, except for Lucas, he was the town winner, so he got a $50 Barnes &amp; Noble gift card. Very exciting. But congratulations to all of our winners, and of course, always thank you to the American Legion Post #70 for continuing to sponsor this annual contest. And next, I would like to acknowledge, I don't see Christmas, she's usually here, I don't see, but I'd like to acknowledge the Academic Booster Club for an amazing elementary science fair on March 18th. There were a truly impressive number of projects and winners from each grade level, K to six, in all of the schools. There's actually gonna be an award ceremony on Tuesday, April 18th, at 7 o'clock PM at the Nutley Museum. They're going to award trophies to all of the winners, so I'll look forward that night to congratulating them all.
It's at the middle school.
Did we move it to the middle school?
Because there were too many.
There were a lot of winners, so that's exciting.
A lot of families, so we saw it in the inventory.
Move it to the middle school. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, thank you. And since I wasn't able to make it to the luncheon yesterday, I'd also like to say congratulations to our hockey coach and hockey team for representing Nutley so very well and staying competitive with their difficult schedule. They did reach the playoffs, so that was exciting for everyone. And a special shout-out to our hockey players who did receive their all-conference honors. Congratulations. Finally, tonight, I'd like to share that, as has been identified in each of our Town Hall and community meetings, in our joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Boards and the Board of Commissioners, and just now in Karen Greco's presentation of the survey results, multifamily development has been identified as a consistent concern in Nutley. I, in the Board of Education, remain emphatic that the actual data as presented shows a clear and definite impact on the enrollment of multifamily development district-wide, and that you can't just look at one property as a model for the whole town. We really need to be addressing this collaboratively. So to that end, I have sent a letter to the Planning and Zoning Boards, as well as the Board of Commissioners, asking that we trust but verify requests. This board has presented facts, and we've supported our statements with hard data throughout the past months, and while multifamily development is just one contributing factor, it really is a reality in our current overcrowding. So while we recognize that student enrollment will never be the sole reason for denial or acceptance of an application, we hope that it will be considered. So in my letter, I also did request that we all continue to meet in person to discuss not only the data that I restated in the letter, but how we can all come together and collaborate in the future to better respond to these ongoing issues that all of our organizations are facing. I think you'll agree with me that we all have a much better chance of accommodating all aspects of the Nutley community if we can work together in the best interest of all of our stakeholders. I know that I and the board look forward to continuing what we began February 15th at the joint meeting, and we hope that we're gonna be able to continue an open and candid dialogue with the intention of fostering a clearer understanding of each of our pressure points, the opportunity to view the issues from a whole variety of perspectives, and the ability to engage in a shared responsibility in decision-making process throughout the entire town. So we'll look forward to those opportunities, and hopefully some of you will join us at those meetings as well as the year continues. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. We're gonna move over to our Board Secretary, Mrs. Karen Yemmits.
Thank you, Mrs. President. To provide an update, the board has issued RFPs for both topography, boundary survey, environmental review, and soil analysis. environmental review, and soil analysis in conjunction with the four projects that we have been presenting. We received an average of twelve requests for each of these RFPs. All of the responses are due by two PM on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, and to Karen Ravino will then be reviewing them and making recommendations to the board. These specs for the Washington School Security Interest project are being finalized. This project is being funded with the remaining two thousand and seven referendum funds. And our two thousand and seventeen eighteen preliminary budget is currently under review by the Department of Education as required. The public budget hearing will take place at the beginning of the April twenty-fourth, Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Yaman. And we're going to move over to our student representative. Mrs. Karen Yaman.
Hi, everyone. So going through some passive events that happened in the high school, Key Club had a very successful blood drive. So we collected one hundred and twenty units of blood. Students that were sixteen and above were able to donate, so we saw a great turnout in that community sense, in the students. So that was really, really great. For the music department, last, well, Saturday night was Cafe Night. So what that is, is a very big fundraiser for the music department, where we, where kids and students from elementary schools all the way up to the high school perform for parents. So essentially, the parents come in, they pay a ticket, they sit down, and we serve coffee and dessert, and we play. So it was really fun, and it was also very successful. Coming up, student council. Officers from student council will shadow commissioners and government officials, I think, the twentieth of this month, so, or of April, sorry. And that's also really cool for students to go see, you know, jobs in the real world, I guess you can say. So that's coming up, as well as a talent show. So student councils team up with human relations for a talent show. I'm excited about that. Teachers are also invited to perform, so that's going to be really fun. School-wide, park is coming up, and so along with that, we're practicing block scheduling. So students are excited about that. It's like dipping our feet in. Seniors, we're going to be out, but for the rest of them, it'll be interesting to see the dynamic, the new scheduling and everything. And something really awesome that's offered during that time is AP practice. So for our students, teachers are offering, well, for seniors, we don't have to come in for parks, so we're told to come in at ten AM. But for AP students, you can come in at eight fifteen and review for AP exams during those two hours or three hours. So that's a great opportunity for students to be able to get a head start in studying for AP exams. The junior class will be having formal coming up, so that's nice. And Language Honors Society inductions will be April fourth at night. So that's also something great to recognize the students for all their hard work in their language courses.
So we also have to recognize you, Katerina, and Maggie. I don't know if you noticed, but these young ladies were awarded the Prudential's President Award for volunteer service, which included actually a plaque. So thank you, our, you work so hard, not just for us, but for all the students at the high school, but really, we're so proud of you and Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you. You better work on a good replacement for us, though. All right, we're moving on to our academic reports. Mr. Valzamo, please.
Yes, Mr. President. The academic committee met on March eighth at five thirty. In attendance were myself, Lisa Dancheck-Martin, Fred Sherman, Dr. Glazer, Kent Banyan, Jeanine Locanulo, Michelle Yasso, Ellie Loyal Moreno, April Vidiello, and Ian Bemeister. For discussion, learning disabilities, teacher consultant Michelle Yasso made a presentation to the committee about the transition program. In addition to her regular caseload, Ms. Yasso developed opportunities in the community for special-ed students to create authentic learning experiences. Ms. Yasso has provided wonderful opportunities. As part of the budget process, we have been exploring ways to provide additional resources to this program and for Ms. Yasso. The committee also discussed with Mr. Bemeister, one of the Nutley Educational Foundation's trustees, the foundation's request will also be recognized as the official alumni association of the district. The committee is turning that request over to the policy committee for additional recommendation, research, and review. Ms. Locanulo reviewed the schedule for March ninth, single session for professional learning. The day was planned to be a collaborative day with teacher leaders, principals, coordinators, all facilitating sessions on a wide variety of topics. Mr. Banyan and Dr. Glazer reviewed requests for professional learning days, field trips, and out-of-state travel. We discussed the need to communicate the need for parent volunteers and chaperones to be fingerprinted and to expand awareness by doing in-district fingerprinting. Dr. Glazer worked with Lindsay Council to plan and schedule fingerprinting events. And finally, Dr. Glazer also provided updates on legal and personnel issues.
Thank you, Mr. Valzamo. Mr. Kuzinski, can you take administration, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Administration committee met on March the sixth, myself, Danny Carnesella, Fred Schiller was able to phone in, and Dr. Glazer. We discussed the upcoming budget. We spent some time discussing the athletic department and the impact on our budget. We're going to take a closer look at that before our presentation. We also discussed some town hall meetings that were coming up, and then we doubled some of the legal issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski. Move over to finance. Mr. Frararo.
Yes, Mr. President. Finance committee met on March twenty-first. Mr. Nipponett briefed the committee on the work orders, building maintenance issues, and plumbing and air filtration issues, completion of the new door locks at the high school. The committee also reviewed the architect proposal that will appear on tonight's agenda. Mr. Nipponett presented quotes for magnetic door strips for security purposes and repainting middle school trim. This is the outside trim that was discussed at one of the town hall meetings. The pillars on the front and on the side is peeling, so we're looking to repaint that. Also, tonight's financial agenda resolutions were reviewed. Ms. Yaman reviewed the two thousand and seventeen and eighteen budget that was submitted to the Department of Education. The committee discussed the located job description for the clubkeeper replacement position, the proposed bus spot, and the next step for the acquisition of the reform church property, as well as PTO donations. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, April eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Frararo. Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we will allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our Board Regulation six oh one alots twenty minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with Mrs. Kakuza before you take the microphone. Before someone steps forward, I, we're also going to make a statement here from all of us here at the Board of Education. This evening, the Nutley Board of Education will move Finance Resolution Twelve, and that is the referendum resolution that is on our, in our information packet. To proceed with the next step in the referendum process, this resolution does not approve the construction project, but it allows the architects to move to the next phase, which is to work with the state of New Jersey to finalize project approvals and determine the actual state debt servicing Nutley will receive. Our goal since the beginning has been to maintain transparency and have open communication throughout this process. We continue to share information with the Board of Commissioners, and most recently to planning and zoning boards, so that each commission is aware of the challenges we face in our school district. As a Board of Education, at times, we have no choice but to be responsive to issues such as state mandates, town development, or other situations in the community that impacts our delivery of education to our students. The Nutley Board of Education takes our role seriously. We believe the solution we have developed over the last several years will take Nutley schools into the future. It will provide an excellent educational experience, and the expansion to our facilities will provide the much-needed space for decades to come. It addresses the needs we've identified, which we will face together as a community. We've developed these plans with the guidance of demographers and architects. We've honed them in with the feedback of the community over the last ten weeks in our town halls and presented them at our final town hall meeting on March eighth. Nutley must continue to stand together and collaborate to create the best possible outcome for our wonderful community and the children of this town, this time with the first person wishing to be heard going forward.
All right. All right, Michael. You just need to sign in just as Kakuza. Thank you.
Michael.
There you go. There you go.
My name is Michael Andrea. I do live here in Nutley. I do appreciate this board's transparency, and that's why I'm here. I've been very vocal about it. I'm against this now seventy-point-four million-dollar referendum. It used to be sixty-six-point-five. And I feel that this referendum is detrimental to us homeowners. This referendum that you wish to push or impose on us through a vote is going to literally probably tax out the very parents of the children that you want to teach. More than what, fifty, sixty percent of the homeowners who live in this town don't have children in school? I have supported this school system for the past twenty years. Enough's enough. I do, we tried referents before, and they all failed. And the thing is, the problem is, it's not the schools, it's our zoning and our planning board. They want to make this town population-wise bigger by creating these apartments and these developments, as you can see on what was up here before. So I would ask this fine board not to follow through with this referendum, because personally, I'm one homeowner that can probably say I don't care about my property values, because I'm not going to, I don't want to sell my house. I work hard for my home, and I want to live the rest of my life in Nutley. When it's my time to go, personally, I don't care what happens to my property. It's going to go to someone in my family. And when I'm at that point, I don't care what it's worth. So I'll say it again, don't follow through this referendum, because you're going to hurt a lot of Nutley homeowners. A lot of Nutley homeowners are going to be properly taxed out in this town, and enough has been, enough damage has been done to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come before the board?
I'm happy to be here on behalf of realtors selling properties in Nutley. I've been a realtor since nineteen eighty-six. I opened up my, uh, nineteen eighty-three, opened up my office in nineteen eighty-six. And one of the things that we have always felt that has kept property values of Nutley was its school system. And if we don't continue to improve our school system, we are not going to be able to get the people in our town, the good people, into our town to keep what it's been forever. I went through the Nutley school system. I'm a Nutley graduate since nineteen seventy, and I do business in Nutley. And I could say, please pass this referendum, because it will benefit our children, our property owners, our seniors that will someday be selling their properties, looking to downsize or move into smaller, and they're going to need the funds to do so. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, Mr. Valzamo, can you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Academic resolutions, one and two. That is it. Sure.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Kuzi.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Frararo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Kuzinski, can you take administration, please?
Yes, sir. I have the administration resolutions one through three as prepared.
So.
Discussion?
Actually, it's one through four. Yeah. It's one through four, correct? Okay, thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Kuzi.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Frararo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. Mr. Frararo, would you take finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I have motion to move Finance Resolutions one through twelve as written.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President, the only discussion I had is I wanted to thank the transportation group that we just came out of discussions with for their help moving us forward, and just wanted to recognize the pretty good job that they do transporting our children and when we're able to move on with the resolution.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also recognize number ten, the accepted donations. We had three donations that came in, one from April and Charles Brady, the Nutley High School Music Department, donations to Nutley cross-country and track and field boosters, as well as a donation from the adequate PTO for water balance for women's schools. So it's women's building, so we appreciate that.
Mr. Valzamo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Frararo?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Carnesella?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation alots thirty minutes for this communication. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, as we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, and sign in with Mrs. Kakuza before you take the microphone. For the first person wishing to be heard, please step over. Okay, seeing none, is there any old business to come before the board?
Not really old business, Mr. President, but I did want to recognize one of our past board members, Angelo Fernicola, an active part of our board. Back in the day, they probably brought us to the point where we are now, and I thank you for your work.
Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recesses the post-executive session that is currently discussed with matters, personnel, and property acquisition. Be further resolved that the result of discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meetings of the Board of Education, for whether reasons for discussing such matters in pro session no longer exist.
Quick motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.